Welcome, everyone. We'll call the special session, the Fountain Hills Town Council, to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Schlumpf.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cantino.
Here.
Councilmember Leger.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Elke.
Here.
We don't have the Pledge of Allegiance on here, but I think we could do Pledge of Allegiance. Do you want us to run our eyes for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone from the public?
In the House building.
We do have a few in the House. All right, our item on the agenda tonight is discussion, possible direction of staff regarding selection process for new town manager and related transitional issues. And Joan, thank you for the staff report.
You're welcome. Welcome. Good evening, mayor and council. With the resignation of our town manager, Rick Davis, recently, staff is requesting direction from the council on how they would like to proceed with the selection process for new town manager. In the past, we've both done recruitment from in-house, and we've also gone outside and hired an executive search firm in the past, and I think both experiences went well. So we'd like to have the council discuss and give us direction which way they would like to pursue this time. In-house recruitment, as I said in the action form, I looked at when we did in-house recruitment in 2008, and the costs were right at $16,000, a few hundred dollars over that. Those costs were the any video conferences that we had to pay for when we did the initial interviews for people out of state, and then when we narrowed the candidates down to the top five, it included the cost for airfare and hotel rooms, and then entertainment. We had a dinner at that time at Copperwind for the top candidates in the council. So those costs and the advertising for the town manager was included in that $16,000. We called the League of Arizona Cities and Towns this week and asked them what the average cost was for an executive search firm, and they indicated it was anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000, depending on the scope of services that we would request from that search firm, and that would not include the airfares and the hotel rooms and the things like that. That's just the search firm's fee for doing the advertising and reviewing the applications and such. So therefore, we'd like some direction from the council as to which direction they would like us to proceed.
Good, thanks, Joan. And seeing that our town manager, Rick Davis, has been going through some interviewing processes of recent, recently, and obviously successfully secured a position in his soon-to-be-new community, I asked him to put some notes together for Joan based on his understanding of our community and the processes he's recently been through to suggest some things to consider Fountain Hills to go through or to put the candidates through, the battery that he's been through recently. So he did share some points here that we can get distributed as well, depending on, regardless of which direction we go. He also included a potential timeline, which I'll just go over here briefly. And Joan, you have a timeline as well where you think it's doable to have a new town manager by December 1?
I think at the latest that's realistic.
Okay. Rick thinks there's even a potential to do it earlier, and I think you do as well, but you were looking at kind of the latest. Rick's timeline says, obviously, get started right away, and that's why we called this meeting. My thought was, you know, wait till the town manager's gone, then you start a discussion about what direction to go or process to follow. But there's really no need. He knows he's leaving, we know he's leaving, and we can go ahead and consider this at this point in time. August 15th, advertisement placement, closing date of August 15th or so. In August, you get the recruitment committee together to evaluate resumes. August 10th, or later in August, you do essay questions sent to the third tier of candidates. Later in August, review the essay answers. September, interviews are complete. September, get into the final process, and towards the end of September, maybe the first part of October, council meets with recruitment committee and select final candidate. So there's other things in between here. What he had also recommended is a recruitment committee and to select folks to have as least politicized process as possible. He has several past council members on here along with Councilmember Leger and Joan as the chair. And now, obviously, that could be in conjunction with an outside search, or if we do it internally, I'm not quite sure how those would all be incorporated. But there's also the battery of ideas he has here, essay questions and how to have a public meeting with the potential final three, as he put it. So we'll incorporate this into the considerations as well. But Rick did just put that together and got it over to Joan yesterday, so I wanted to make sure we milked him for that information since it was fresh in his mind with the recent interviews he's had. But we've got your report, Joan, and I just open up the council to see your thoughts. I think either route to go, if we do executive search, that worked, I think, I wasn't on council with town manager Pickering, and I think the last one worked quite well with using the internal team, saving a little bit of money and going and securing town manager Davis. So, but there are probably benefits to either way, and then there's the timeline to talk about, and then anything else related to transitional items. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, mayor. I would personally be in favor of going outside, hiring an executive search company to help us find the town manager. I see benefits on both sides, and I see that it's going to cost a lot more money, or maybe more than double if we do it with a team, but I see huge benefits in going outside. As many people as there are in the streets today, I would just as soon have some professionals go through the process of finding the group of town managers that they would recommend and kind of minimizing the efforts that we go through. Okay? Thank you.
Councilmember Elke.
Yeah, I would echo that, too, and I think it's best probably to go outside because of the pool of individuals that they may be able to draw from, and also taking, you know, we want it to be least politicized and having it outside source saying, here, council, mayor and council, here's 10, or whatever number of applicants that we would then interview. It takes out the political aspect, not only politically as elected officials, but also within in-house committee that may be staff by staff who are essentially picking their boss, in a sense. So I think that could be helpful, too.
Councilor Dickey.
Just so that you know, that I'm going to be away the, like, the 15th of September till, like, October 2nd or 1st, whatever that week that begins is. So when we talk about the timeline, I'd appreciate it if you could keep that in consideration.
Okay. Appreciate it. And Councilor, Vice Mayor Cantino.
Thank you, mayor. I go along with the other two council members, along with doing the outside search. I think we've got a greater chance this time to get some real good people in, and I think that this will do a good job. It's both ways, but I think that this time we should go out and do an executive search.
All right, and Councilmember Hanson.
Gilbert just went through this process, actually, and they did use an outside firm. And they, to compound on what you were talking about, they had an interesting component with their process. They had three main groups that did the interviews, and that was the council, it was executive staff, and then a list of community leaders and business representatives. And then they had a problem-solving exercise where a municipal problem was presented to the candidates, and they had to put together a presentation on how to deal with the problem, and that was presented in a public meeting. So we might want to keep that in mind as well.
Okay. Good. Well, let's not lose track of that one, or any of these ideas that we might bring up tonight or think about, because whichever route we go, we can plug those in to when we get down to the final candidates and interject those types of things. One item that Rick mentioned that he thought was particularly helpful is somewhat like mashing what you just said and the community meeting together. He had a meeting with the citizenry where they set up, in the council chambers, each candidate was invited, there were three at the time, there were three tables, so each candidate would go to each table for 30 minutes, and there they would meet with community leaders, including the chamber commerce, school district legislators, some city staff commissioners, PTO, and other stakeholders from the community at these tables, and then each of them would go around from one table to another. So I'm sure there's more to it he can share, but it kind of reminded me a little bit of that. But, good, those are good stakeholder groups to bounce those ideas off of. Councilmember Hanson? Jesus. Wrapping it up.
Yeah, and I think the benefit of going outside is, like Dennis said, there's a lot of people out there right now, and some of these outside agencies have a really good handle on who and what is available.
Yeah. Councilor Dickey.
How do you pick the search firm? What is that process?
Do you have any insight into that, Joan?
Well, I think we contacted City of Prescott because they've just gone through the process, too, and what they did is an informal RFP that they sent out, and they had the scope of services that they were expecting from the firm. They set the dollar limit for them, and it was $20,000 and said, you know, whatever you can do for $20,000. So what they did was they, the search firm did the advertising, they collected all the applications, resumes, and then they screened them all and narrowed them down to the top, I think, 10 candidates, and then turned it over to the town. And that was their $20,000 fee, and then the town, city took over from there. City surprised, we contacted them, too, because we know they just went through the recruitment process, they did theirs in-house. We contacted the city of Gilbert, and they hired an outside firm. They were going to get back to us with the costs, and they did not do so before the meeting tonight, so I'm not sure what the cost of that was.
Okay.
But probably have to go out with an RFP, I would imagine.
And how quickly could that have been done, Andrew?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'd like to propose that if the council's direction is to go with an outside search firm tonight, that whatever motion you make authorizes the acting town manager to execute a contract after an informal process, because these are professional services that you can direct select, but we're not going to have the opportunity to have you all together again to approve a contract until later on, as long as there are certain parameters that you all want us to meet. If we meet those, to be able to select the firm and move forward, if your motion tonight can include that, then the staff can go ahead in the first couple of weeks of July, do the informal process, get the contract in place, and have them working for the last three weeks before your next meeting.
Yeah, good, thanks for that. Sounds like most folks are looking at the executive search, the outside executive search, which is fine, but I will mention, and then some of your former, the last time we did the search, there were 70, 80 applicants, so they did, from all over the country. So they did get a wide net out there with whatever advertising or outreach you guys did, and probably in the day of the internet, someone looking for a job as a town or city manager is going to find it by, through a Google search if they aren't contacted directly. So there's definitely that reach also available by doing it in-house, but there are communities that do it both ways, so. Councilmember Leger. Or, I'm sorry, did you have any more? Councilmember Leger.
I'm sensing that the consensus vote is to go out with an external firm, and one of the reasons I've heard is to take the politics out of it. But then I heard that if we cap it at a certain amount of money, then they're going to bail out at a certain part of the process, which means then it's back to an internal process, and, you know, you have 10 applicants, and you're early on in the process, you know, I don't think politics played into it last time in an internal process. I don't think it would going forward, but if that's the variable, then that concerns me. I mean, if you're going to go out with an outside firm, you need to be willing to pay for a very good service, rather than saying, okay, let's ceiling them out at 18 grand. And basically, what they do is they give us a bunch of applicants. Once again, I can respect what I'm hearing as the consensus vote going forward, but in this job market, you could probably put this out tomorrow, and you're probably going to get 100-plus applicants. I think we got 80 last time. We had some superior applicants. I think we picked a very, very good candidate. You have a human resource director that's more than capable of managing the process. So the bottom line is that it's, if you guys, if you folks are interested in going outside, be willing to pay for it, because if you're going to cut it off at 10 grand, 15 grand, 20 grand, whatever, and get half of a process, then we might as well have done an internal process from the get-go. And frankly, I think in an internal process, you almost have more flexibility of adding steps along the way, but I guess in terms of an RFP, that could be one of the advantages. Joan had a great process she put together. We can add some things. So I'd like to take another shot at it, frankly. If the vote is to go with an external process, what I mean by another shot at it, I'd like to see what the cost is going to be. You know, if someone comes back and basically says, well, yeah, for 20 grand, this is what we can get you, and it's short of what we want, then that would concern me. So my thinking is that if we go with an external process and we come up with a set of criteria and we see what the price is out in the market, and then it comes back to us to vote on it, I'm kind of getting circular in my discussion argument. I think you get my point. I don't want to jump off at a 15 to 20, 20 grand project and get half of a process. That's my only concern. And basically, when we looked at this last time, we were looking at $50,000, $60,000. That was the market price. And I think when you add in what you've just stated here, it was 30 plus 18, which is, I mean, travel goes without saying, and the more steps you add in the process, i.e., we want this person to be viewed by the citizenry, engaged in problem-solving processes, so forth and so on, and the more you bring these people back, the more the cost goes up, so...
That's my good point.
I'm concerned about the cost. I could go either way, frankly, with internal or external.
I think if we go with the external, it'd be important to get the number down to far less than 10, because once you get to 10, then you're flying them all here or doing some other interaction to draw it down to a smaller number than that. And I think the process Rick's recently been through, and I think also with Gilbert, they did get that number down to three or five, six, six. So I think we want to do probably at least six or fewer. Councilmember Elke.
What I heard, Joan, and I just want to make sure I heard it correctly, it was $20,000 that Prescott paid to narrow it down to 10. Is that...
They set the limit. When they send out the RFP, they said they had $20,000 to spend, and that's the service that they received from the recruitment firm was the advertising, the collection of the resumes, but they set that dollar amount at 20,000. They didn't want to go above that. So, you know, the council here could just say, if you want them to do the whole process and just give them that scope of service, then they would bid on that, and you would decide whether you wanted to cut that service down or whether that was reasonable and you wanted to pay that.
Sure, I mean, it sounds to me if we put together a similar RFP and just said if we wanted to narrow it to six, or five, or three, whatever that number that we decide, and then have our own interviews with council after that, it sounds like we would be able to keep it, keep the costs down and not let them get out of control if we specifically set a ceiling on that.
Sure, I think it depends on the, you know, where your top candidates are from. If they, I know Gilbert had some candidates, their top six, that were, you know, pretty close, so they didn't have to fly them in, and they didn't have to put them up in a hotel room. And when we did the recruitment back in 2007, '08, we had five top candidates, and they were all from out of state, so we had to bring all five of those in. You know, you might only have three this time that are from out of state. It just depends.
Sure, and being new to the process as far as using outside sources, I'd like to have some information. Kind of goes to what Mr. McGuire was saying, more information is to the company that we use and how you contract and who you use. I don't know if there's a large pool, is there a small pool, I mean, of companies that do this type of, do this type of thing, at least whether it's locally, nationally, that sort of thing.
I've been contacted by two already, just, and I said that we didn't know yet which direction we were going to go. One was out of Mesa. I don't remember the name of them. Have it up in my office. And then we got the name from the city of Gilbert, you know, the company that they used, I think it was a firm out of California that they used, and I've heard that name a lot. It's something like CPS or something. So that's a firm's name that I hear quite frequently. So I imagine there's quite a few of them around.
Sure. Either of those firms affiliated with a former town manager?
No, no, no. CPS is out of California, and the other one was in Mesa, and I don't remember the name of that, but it was a gentleman that I think he used to work for the city of Mesa, if I remember correctly, when he called. I have his name upstairs, but...
Good, so it's, Councilmember Leger.
Once again, in that it sounds like the consensus here is to move to an outside consultant, what should we spend some time setting some parameters? Or could you suggest some parameters or a process? Once again, I don't want to be left with paying someone $20,000 to give us a bunch of applications, you know? If we're going to go with an outside firm, then they get us the applications, and then after they get us the applications, they're involved in the process going forward, and if anyone recalls what that was, there were many, many steps that the committee engaged in, and having a professional do that is fine, but once again, to have them jump off at a certain point and download us with 10 applicants, we're kind of back where we started again. And I'm sure that Joan could get 50 applicants by, in two weeks in this particular job market. So once again, I can go either way with this, but I think we need to really be, identify or scope out, you know, what it is we want and what we're willing to pay for. Thank you, mayor.
Thanks. Councilor Dickey.
Mayor, thanks. I don't know how these are set up at all, but I think I agree, I mean, I do agree with the mayor and with Henry, that initial attracting a bunch of applicants really worked out well, and I wonder how much of the resources that you would pay somebody to do that part goes to that, because I agree that getting all of them there wasn't the problem. It's later, and the things that you were saying, we would like to try to avoid, that's the expertise from somebody from the outside to go through and to make all those calls and do the things that have to be done. So I don't know if they set up those contracts by saying, this is how much they spent on the initial, or could we do the initial part and then just say, here's the 100 people who applied, now you do all that work? So just, I just had to agree that the front end of it isn't the problem, the back end is, and then the three or the four, or however many we go, then that's perfectly acceptable. So I would agree with pretty much what everybody's saying.
Councilmember Elke.
Thank you. It might be helpful to take a look at the Prescott RFP and see what they specifically did. I'm sure we could probably adopt much of what they've included in our RFP, and we could fine-tune it. And I agree with fellow council, we've got to make sure that we're very specific about what we're looking to get, because I don't want them jumping off when, you know, they haven't fully completed everything, so I'm very much in favor of that. So it'd probably be helpful to see that RFP, or at least get the RFP and then some staff recommendations or discussion amongst ourselves.
I do have a copy of the letter, the informal RFP that Prescott used. They did send that to us, but we could also ask, I imagine Gilbert probably went out with an RFP also, so we could request theirs. The only, I guess, problem with that, if it is a problem, would be that it's going to slow the process down, of course, to go out with an RFP, but if that doesn't concern the council with the timeframe, then that would be the only problem I would see.
Mayor, may I ask a quick question? What's the difference between a formal and an informal RFP? I'm quite curious.
I don't know. I mean, maybe Andrew can answer that.
Typically, under the town code, anything over $20,000 is done by formal sealed bid proposals, where you send them out, you advertise, you go through the whole process. We have a carve-out for professional services, I think this falls into, because much like, you know, hiring doctors and lawyers and everyone else, you want to pick a specific firm for the character they bring to it. So I think we can go around the normal process, but we want direction from all of you on how much do you want us to do? If we gather up the name of five firms and send them out an RFP and say, here's what we want, give us a bid back, and then choose the best bid of all those, is that going to be sufficient enough process? Because we can certainly do that fairly easily with the RFPs we know are out there already. We can cull from what Gilbert did and what Prescott did to try and create something fairly efficiently without having to spend a lot of time. That way, we can get that person or group on board earlier. If you all want us to come back to you with, here's the group of potential firms, we can do that as well. It's completely up to you.
Good. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, mayor. I would also think that with, along with the RFP, the search firms would more than likely give us different steps and different prices from A to Z, and so we could pick and choose and put together what we wanted them to do via the dollar as well as the scope of work. So I think, since it can be an informal RFP, that that's what I'd like to see done. I think the search firms will help us as much as we can help them. Am I missing something?
Typically, the search firms will have a standard protocol that they like to do. Sometimes you'll have a menu of items that they'll do. They'll give you their Spartan version, it sounds like Prescott used, they'll do the soup-to-nuts version that Gilbert used. And the customization level that you do typically governs how much they're going to charge you. And how much you customize depends on what they gave you. So if we find a search firm that hits a lot of the points that we've already heard you discuss, customization will be fairly low and it'll be cheaper for us, but until we get responses back from those, that group of firms, we won't really know how much variation they see in the process. But we can certainly do that fairly easily to get you proposals. Another thing as well is if you all want to have a process where we bring back proposals and share them with you, with Joan's recommendation for which firm to go with, and we don't have everybody in town, we could certainly do, you know, mostly telephonic or partially telephonic meeting where everybody has the information, looks at it, and then gets together to direct us. We can do that just as well sometime in mid-Jin or mid-July, as long as we don't get to that, as long as we haven't get to the end of the month of July, I think we'll be all right.
Good. Councilmember Brown.
One other question. Joan, in seven and eight, we had a staff of 80 people, 81 people, and today we're at 59. Would you feel comfortable taking this on again with a local staff?
Sure, yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson.
I think one of the things we would hope that they would provide is the screening, and kind of like eHarmony, finding your perfect match. So how they would determine what our criteria was, you know, what type of a management style are we looking for, you know, the ability to give them some input to help them in the screening process.
Yeah, Andrew, as far as you know, because I think you're right, because they're going to, I think part of their work would have to begin with council and staff to understand who they're looking for.
Typically, what the search firms will do is they're, and they're part of their initial collection, screening process, while the advertisement's out and they're collecting the large numbers of applicants, they'll meet with all of you individually or in small groups in order to get a feel for what the town may be looking for. I don't know if they do it with the staff level, but they'll definitely want to talk to the seven of you to see what you're looking for so they know what to screen.
I think that's important. So just so we're clear, the search firm would actually pare it down to the four to six or whatever number we come up with, and then we'd jump into this more public process where we'd have the roundtables or stakeholder groups and that sort of thing. So that'll still be our baby. I'm not sure if they help us through that piece, or if they just typically drop us off and say, here you go.
They certainly can.
Okay.
They can do either one, and I think that's where we'll find out how much of a price point break we're going to have. Hopefully, they'll be able to have participation just in culling the information, you know, coming out of those large group interviews that were done, there was a lot of scoring that was done. To be able to at least synthesize all that and provide it back to the council, show, you know, graphically, here's how everybody measured up and point-wise, and here's whether they were strong or not. All that synthesis work that Joan did last time, that would be a helpful area to have them involved in towards the end of it, if that's something that doesn't push it over the top of price, but we'll find all that out once we get responses back from them.
Okay. Councilmember Elke.
And I think, I like the idea of what Joan mentioned as far as what Prescott did, where they specifically said, there's RFP, and this is what we're willing to pay to do this job, and they obviously got a bid, and I would presume they probably got more than, maybe more than one bid. So having that out there specifically as opposed to putting the RFP out there, saying this is what the criteria, what we'd like to have, and then getting bids and then going through that process, and perhaps wasting some time on those that won't bid it if they knew what the amount is that we're willing to pay, so it may be best to have that specific amount in there so we know what we're going to be paying, we know exactly what we're going to be getting. So I think that's very important to have in the RFP.
Good. Councilmember Leger.
Are all my fellow council members aware of the process that Joan utilized in the last search? last search? I mean, it may be helpful if you could briefly go through that. That could kind of give us a sense for, you know, kind of a course scope of work and then we could simply add to that, because it was, it was a very thorough process. And I just heard someone state criteria for screening applicants. There was about 20 variables that were looked at for each candidate in terms of evaluating each person that applied for the job. And they were ranked, ordered, weighted, so forth and so on. I mean, Joan pretty much did what a professional group would do. But once again, I see the value in going outside and it might help us to cut to the chase if you could share some of that process with us and we could move a little quicker in terms of, if we're comfortable with that, getting more specifics in an RFP and getting kind of what we're looking for. Would you, would that be acceptable?
I think that's all right. Or we can, what we could do is ask a couple of council members to work with Joan and to come up with the process to get to the, to hire this search firm. And then they will contact us to help understand what we are looking for as council members and a town manager. And have the ad hoc group of the council work with Joan to make sure we're not missing any pieces. And the process we went through last time was tremendous. And I know we pared it down through a number of different ways and reviewing every single application. Now, the search firm would do this piece, but we don't want to miss some of those pieces that you just mentioned. But could we do that perhaps through, if you're willing, or someone that sat on the committee last time?
Well, I think the value of, Mayor, I think the value of being here this evening is so that we are all on board with the process. I think it's really important that everyone here is on board with the process, you know, moving forward and having some input into that process. If you put an ad hoc group together, then once again, you know, that's like, that feeds the purpose of taking, you know, what is assumed politics out of the deal. I mean, because who's to say that ad hoc group would not, you know, engage in some decision-making that other people would take offense with? I think that, I'm hearing a consensus from the group here, from council, that we want to move forward on this as soon as possible. I'm hearing that we want to go with an outside firm. I don't want to personally be dabbling with an RFP process and working through this forever. And that could take two additional months. So, I just thought it would be helpful.
Yeah, that wouldn't hurt.
To have Joan put out on the table some of the steps she would envision in this RFP to get a cost for it. And then if there's anyone up here that would like to add something to that, so we're all on board with the process. It's one of the last opportunities we have to do this as a group.
Okay. Joan, are you comfortable talking about some of those steps?
Sure, of the process that we followed last time, you mean? Well, the first thing we did was the council appointed a recruitment committee and that consisted of three council members, myself and the town manager's executive assistant, Shawna. Then we put a link on our website to ask for input from the community as to what they would, their ideal town manager would look like. And so, they gave us some insight into that. We asked staff the same thing, what qualities they would like to see in the town manager. The recruitment committee then got together and reviewed all that. We put out the ads to a number of different places. The main places to advertise for town manager, I think, were most of the websites that they use is ICMA and then also the National League of Cities and of course, the Arizona League of Cities and Towns. And there's also different publications. There's a public sector website that I used last time that was very successful, as well as a Western City Magazine that goes out to the western states of the United States and we got quite a few responses from them. So, the ads went out, we received 72 applications and we, the recruitment committee met and we narrowed that down to nine. We did the video conferences with those that were out of state of those nine. And then we narrowed it down to that point from, to five candidates and brought those in to town with their spouses. And it was a two-day process, if I recall. We had the council members conduct interviews with each one of those candidates. We had the council members submit questions to me and then I went through those and typed them up so that you all had a set of the questions. And then we had the direct reports and management team interview each of the candidates. Everybody had evaluation forms on that. And then, of course, we did the public forum with the community to make sure the community all had input. And we had evaluation cards available for them to fill out. After those three things were done, we gave the candidates a tour of the town of Fountain Hills. I know some of our staff assisted with that and took them around and showed them the schools and the different religious organizations and things like that, some of the housing that was available in Fountain Hills and answered any questions. And then we, the recruitment committee made a recommendation to the council in an e-session and it was discussed at that point and they agreed on, you know, which candidate to make an offer to. And town attorney McGuire negotiated with that candidate, which was Rick Davis.
Good. Thank you for walking us through that. Councilmember Dickey.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say that Councilwoman Legge has said several times, this consensus seems to be, and I agree, but I just want to also, I don't want everybody to know that it's a done deal, because I sort of came in here thinking in terms of, oh, we'll just do that again. So, now what I'm hearing is giving me pause for thought, but I haven't, you know, I'm not, the reason I would say we would go outside is mostly because of the time and all those things you just said, they were, it was pretty intense. We, the ones that were on the committee, especially when we first got all the, I was going to say agendas, all the resumes, everything that we did, which, you know, was really an undertaking and if we're willing to do that again. So, that's one of the things I wanted to mention. The funny thing about the actual decision-making at the end, it still comes down to us and the community and that kind of thing. When we first got all of the resumes, there was probably no, some of the things that you're fearing about judgments, because it was kind of easy at first to say, well, okay, these don't even have the correct qualifications or something. And then we got down, down, down to it, just like Joan just said. So, I'm, I think it's going that way also, Henry, but I didn't want to make, I didn't want you to think I came in here and that, at this point, I wouldn't entertain if anybody was changing their minds. One thing, Mayor, that, when we talked about the money part, if you say how much your top amount is, some, they'll probably find a way to make it cost that. So, I don't know, will it still be a process that we would accept the lowest bid? Because when you put a ceiling on it, it's like, oh, we're only going to spend $20,000 and then everybody's going to come in at $20,000, because they're going to want to do whatever they feel they can do for that. So, I'm a little, I don't want to be in the same circumstance that Prescott, looks like they were, where they set a dollar limit and then maybe, maybe didn't get everything that they wanted. So, would we still be able, would they still feel the pressure to put a better bid in than a $20,000?
Andrew, what's your experience?
Typically, with professional services, we don't really have a low bid process. With professional services like architects and engineers and other things, it's typically qualifications-based. What we'd ask them to do in this instance is to give us a two-pronged bid, where one is a qualifications-based submittal, the second one is a separate price proposal, so that you can review all of the proposals on a qualifications base only to see what they're going to do for you and to see who you might rank. And then you look at price to see, of all the ones that meet your minimum or meet your threshold, what you want to do, who has the better price. That way, you're not, the two don't bleed into each other in terms of the qualifications and the price, but it's not strictly a low bid process.
Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Hanson.
So, then it would be like Dennis said, almost having a list of options to choose from and deciding the level of service that we would want to have. And that way, we wouldn't want to put a ceiling on it just because it would be like, well, what if we like this option over here for $3,000 more or whatever? I think we want to have that flexibility to decide what pieces we want.
Okay. So, well, how, what's the process to get to that point? Give this to staff and then have a teleconference or if most of us are here, come back and hear about these options, menus of services available?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, probably the best way for you to be able to decide on the search firm is for us to have the process go forward to get a group of bids, as you would call them, from those five groups or however many we're going to put out there. And then bring that back to you all for review and then get everybody together telephonically if necessary. Because until you have the proposals back from them, you're not going to really have anything to compare. The proposal on the front end, I think, will be fairly simple for us, because we know what the council did last time, we know what Gilbert's done. We should be able to put an RFP together pretty quickly that meets all of the needs and gets the right submissions. It's after that point that we're going to need input from you all as to which one you want to go with based upon the services they're providing. And then you can make the call like Councilmember Hanson said, you know, if it's $3,000 but you really want that other service, you'll be able to make that determination then.
Okay. Councilmember Legge.
Thank you. And thank, Joan, thanks for going through that process. And I'm going to, once again, address my fellow council members. Is there, is there anything at this point in time that was not in that process that we'd like to have in that process? So, once again, you know, we have the menu out there. I know I had heard a problem-solving exercise, which a lot of recruitment firms do. There's certain problem-solving exercises folks do. Is that something we would want to add? Because that would be an extra step, it would be an extra cost and it may be valuable. That's just an example, because I heard that. But is there anything else that we can put out there to, you know, make this process as robust as possible, meeting everyone's needs? Because as I said, it's really important, I think, that we're all on board. I think her process was thorough. We did not have a problem-solving exercise. We didn't have an essay. I mean, those are good things. We kind of had an essay because we asked questions and we were very extensive in that regard. So, anyway.
Councilwoman Legge, what you're asking about this additional step, is this to, for them to use to get us down to our four to six or whatever it is prior to that? Or are you talking about, once it comes back to us?
I'm just saying from, from step one to hiring, what are all those process steps? And firms are willing to do all of that, some of that, none of that. And if we're going to go out with a menu, it's simply, what is the scope of service that we want? And then we can come back and then decide, well, we'll have them take us to this point and then we'll do whatever we need to. I just, you know, rather than coming back after and saying, well, this firm didn't have a problem-solving exercise, or this firm didn't have an activity for council members to travel to the community to interview other coun, you know, there's just different things there. So, we came in unscheduled for this particular meeting, we're here, we're not going to be together for a while. So, I just want to, I want to give Joan as much information as she can so she can, you know, work on this and can make our best decision.
Good. Councilmember Dickey.
Mayor, thanks. The problem-solving exercise, isn't that kind of what we did though when we had questions about, you know, certain scenarios? Remember? Well, I don't even know if I might want to talk about these things, but there, when you have a good interview and you have a bunch of questions, a lot of times they have to do with, what would you do if this happened staff-wise? What would you do if this happened city-wise? So, all of those questions were asked, so it wouldn't maybe necessarily have to be a separate thing that would cost more money.
Mayor, a professional recruiting firm, and I'm no expert, but they would do what I think Councilwoman Hanson described as what they call in the industry an inbox exercise, where they actually have certain scenarios and you ask how they would approach those and how they would prioritize those. And I think actually Rick, in his last interview, went through a process similar to that and he thought it was very valuable. So, I just put that on the table.
So, that's, just to keep it in perspective, that's when they get down to like eight or nine or 10. Then they, then they throw those type of batteries at them. It wasn't a group of, you know, a 70 that they gave that to. It was kind of like when you started doing the video conferences, you brought it from nine down to five.
Right.
So, yeah, do we want to include something like that?
I understand that. We're just talking about the scope of service. What do we want this group to do? And, you know, if we want to leave it up to Joan, that's fine. If people want to have input, this is the opportunity. I would suggest some type of problem-solving exercise. I think that's a good idea. So, maybe you can toss that into the mix if people feel comfortable with that.
If, I was going to say, if I may, Mayor and council members, you know, I might recommend to start out with the basic scope of services and then maybe add to them. Like have the firm develop the candidate profile after they speak to each one of you and what you're looking for in a town manager. And then develop the advertising campaign, so they would tell you where they're going to advertise, recruit the candidates from that, screen the candidates and narrow it down to maybe the top 10 or depending on how many applications you receive, you know, narrow it down to a reasonable amount of number. And then the travel plans for the candidate, they could, they could do that part, but I would assume the town would pay those costs rather than have the firm pay the costs and then we reimburse them. So, we would have some control over that, I think, so they're not all flying first class and bringing their whole family.
You're at 10 candidates right now? I think we'd want to have it pared down, maybe insert what Councilwoman Legge said, this problem-solving at the, you know, do it down to 10 and do this problem-solving across the 10, then they could, the search firm could then narrow it down to five or some number like that. And then it comes into the public realm and then do they help us with that or are we left then to handle things on our own?
Well, and that would be up to the council. Like I said, I think the search firm would give you their recommendations then of, you know, which candidate they thought was the best fit for Fountain Hills, arrange the final interviews and they would do the background checks most likely on the candidates. You know, so I think, once the applicants are narrowed down to the top three or five, whatever the council decides on, it's really up to the council then to determine if we want to do things in-house from there, if we want to raise, you know, have them come in and do an oral presentation so you can see their skills that way or whatever. I think it would be up to the council to do that. So, I don't know if you need to have all that information for the recruiting firm upfront or if we can decide that later on. I think at least if you make the decision that you want to go to an outside firm, then the first step is going to be to interview the council, that firm would, or go for an RFP, but whoever you choose, and then find out what qualifications you want that town manager to have so they can start their advertising campaign, because that's going to take the longest.
So, the problem-solving regimen's a good one to plug in.
Sure.
At some point to get it down to the smaller number before it comes to council and the public and such. And the essay questions are another one that Rick mentioned that I think are good. What Rick had suggested and probably what's not too uncommon is, once we narrow it down to say five, just to pick a number, then the, there is a two-day process, which is what we did last time and what he suggests this time. Meet with the department directors, key staff and the entire council. And the first, that evening also take, have an open house for the community, meet the candidates, community members attending, then could be asked to score or otherwise leave comments regarding their interactions. And the second day, the final process should include a city tour, each candidate and each evening, the community evaluation interview. And then I mentioned the process that he went through in West Jordan was to do that, those three tables. Now, that was just having it down to three candidates, we could have five or whatever number we choose as kind of the final step before we go into executive session and decide who to pick about, who to pick from. Councilmember Hanson.
As I recall, the last time, it was, and I thought it was a Saturday, but we actually had an open public meeting and it was very well-attended. And the same questions were asked of all the candidates and then we did get comment cards back from the public. And I think the problem-solving that Gilbert did was more in that venue, where the candidates actually got up and they had prepared a presentation, just like if they were in a regular council meeting and, you know, this is my, I think what Ginny was referring to is when we had just thrown out scenarios like an executive session, you know, tell us a time when you did this or how you solved this. So, they're kind of two different levels. One was just kind of the verbal and this other one is more formal, where they actually present to the public, just like if it was in a regular council meeting.
Yeah, I like that idea. That'd be a good option to first have on our menu.
Good.
At the end, oh, yeah, at the end, for sure.
Councilmember Legge.
I promise, no more, no more process discussion. I was just sitting here and I was thinking about the fact that I don't recall monies in the budget for recruiting a new town manager. Did you have anything in your budget for this?
No, I didn't. I didn't have anything.
And if I may, Julie, is there, we don't have a lot of wiggle room in our contingency fund, so it's just, that's the So, it's just, just, that's the practical side of all this as well. We didn't budget for this expenditure. I'm sure we could squeeze it out someplace somehow. Any thoughts, Julie?
Mayor, Councilmember Burge, we're likely to have some vacancy savings with the town manager with him leaving. And if they're, depending on how much the council wants to commit to it, we will go back to the budget and look to see where we can do a budget transfer from.
That's a good point. If the salary alone vacant for that long probably would cover the cost. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right. Yes, Councilmember Dickie.
Do we have to take action to have a, to appoint an interim?
Good point. Not necessarily, but Andrew, walk us through what you suggest or what's necessary.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I don't believe you need to make any decision on an interim tonight because by job description, when Rick resigns his position beginning of August, Julie's role is to fill in, in his absence. So, you'll have a natural transition to your first meeting in August. And at that point, you'll need to make a decision one way or the other because we do have one technical issue that, with Julie as the acting town manager, it runs afoul of our nepotism policy. So, we'll have to address that at that August meeting as well, just to make sure that, you know, whatever you do on an interim basis, if it involves Ms. Getty, she's going, we're going to have to address that issue. Obviously, there's, you know, outside firms who have been, who have been or will be contacting Joan about interim services that they provide. And a number of firms that provide, people will come and be here for four months to do exactly what you're going to do. But all of that, you can decide in August, you don't have to handle it now. If you have questions between now and then, feel free to shoot them our way and Joan will be happy to answer any of those.
Good. Thank you. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Andrew, I'd like to explore the possibility of maybe going ahead and just writing a check and letting the town manager go. Pay him the 23 days or 28 days and the four weeks and, and stopping, stop the bleeding right now. And I, he's checked out, he's not, he's not focusing on Fountain Hills. And it's, I just feel like that he's handed his resignation and the thing to do would be to move on.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Brown, I don't know how much physical time difference that would be. I know that he's got vacation planned for some part of July and he's gone this weekend. I don't know if we're talking about a couple of weeks difference. Having discussed that opportunity with him at all, and I, I guess, depending upon when it is that you're talking about, his resignation is effective on the first of August. So, you know, he's, he's essentially still under contract until the first of August. So, anything you would do would have to include the pay during that period plus whatever payout you have. So, I don't know that there's really a pay differential between physically here and physically not. I think it's about the same. So, whatever you all want to do, physically in the seat wise is, is up to you, of course.
Thank you. Councilmember Elke.
I think Councilmember Brown brings up a good point. As far as the pay, if we're under contract, we're under contract and we've got to pay him whatever it is that he's owed. If we're in this transition and, you know, in the military, we called it kind of a short-timers disease in a sense, and it kind of creeps over you a little bit when you're getting ready to get out and you're finishing your hitch. You already think about what you're going to be doing once you're done and once you're out. And it's kind of, I think it's kind of similar here. Rick can't probably help thinking about what he's going to be doing. He's making plans to move and that sort of thing. In July, with council not being here, not a whole lot going on in the town. We passed the budget, everything's done. Not negatively impacting him financially. I think it might be a good way to, to transition, to look at taking that step, you know, terminating the contract effective immediately, paying Rick what he's, what he's owed, and then, you know, going on with this process. We have Ms. Getty to act as interim town manager in the process. And of course, there will be that cost savings that we were talking about before when we're going through the selection process. So, that might be certainly something to, to look at. And, I mean, just from, from personnel standpoint, you know, I appreciate all the work that Rick has done. In a sense, use, to use a presidential term, he's a bit of a lame duck. He's on his way out, you know, so it might be something worth looking at.
Thanks. Councilmember Dickie.
Mayor, I would ask that we would maybe talk about this in executive session or, or else, does he know that we were going to have this on the discussion? So, I, I'm just a little bit not sure about this discussion right now. But if we are having it, I'd just like to know what's the, what's the problem we're trying to solve here by doing this? I don't, I don't quite understand. I mean, we aren't going to be here and so I'm missing the point someplace.
Here's what I see, obviously, you know, what Tatum mentioned, the lame duck thing is kind of true, but what, what he just did in an example with this two-page memo he just put together for Joan working on transition is what I think he can, obviously apart from other functions that the town manager has to do while he's here, is helping us to transition and prepare us for the next town manager is probably important work that we can have, ask him to do further, you know, while he's here. Now, if we have him leave earlier, not show up anymore, but still pay him, I'm not sure what the real benefit is there. I think there's still some things he can do here. There'll still be some town manager work to do, even though we won't be meeting as a council member, as a councilman, he's only here for three weeks for the most part of July. So, you know, he's done a great job. He's, he may, he may, his mind may be starting to drift towards northern climates, particularly when it's 115 degrees here, but he is still doing work. So, I, I don't see any benefit in not having him here, not doing work and paying. So, I think we just, if we have him tasked to do some specific things related to transition, then I think it can only help us. All right. So, for the, in August, we'll talk about firming up interim plans and any things we need to do in relation to deputy town manager Getty. Also, to get us to the next step with the outside search firm, we'll need a motion at some point. And then what it would likely include would be to bring things back to council for us to look at a menu of services from, from several providers and staff's feedback on or suggestions as to which way to go. You know, first look at the people that have been successful in communities around Fountain Hills or Gilbert, you mentioned Prescott, you know, anywhere in Arizona. Those four or five firms that have been successful and have helped and they've had good feedback from their town council and staff. Look at four or five of those and then ask them more broadly to get us ultimately with their scope work to get us to, down to five candidates to then bring in, similar to what we did last time, and infuse a couple of the ideas that were brought up tonight into the final process so that we can arrive at a town manager selection. Councilmember Brown, Andrew.
Mr. Mayor, I propose then that what we'll do is we will put together an RFP, RFQ, split price and qualifications proposal process that essentially is a soup to nuts request to have them give us from beginning to end of the process what they would do with compartmentalized processes along the way so that you can pick and choose along the way of when you would want to stop the services. And then make sure that they include within that some of the things that you specifically referenced tonight, to include that as part of their, from beginning to the end of the process. That way, you'll be able to look at each firm's total package of services from beginning to end and decide based upon the cost of each one, which way you'd like to go.
I like the timeline that Rick put down here and something between what Rick had put and what Joan had had in her report would be great to have a start time by December 1. But perhaps having the final interview type of thing at the beginning of November, at the end of October, where we could still have some of our winter visitors that might actually be back here to include them in that public process as well would be great. But to have a December 1 target as the outside target to have somebody start, I think would be great, but I'd like to see it happen actually more like November 15th or the first if we could to actually have somebody on board. But I don't want to have us, have an executive search firm give us 10 people to then start going through this because then it's going to get real costly to fly 10 people and perhaps their spouses in and go to dinner. And I think the last process worked really, really well. We can infuse some more of these other things, perhaps get a broader reach by using a professional firm that just does these things and end up with another great town manager for Fountain Hills' future. What do you need, what do we need to give to staff here tonight, Andrew, now that you understand where we're going?
Mayor, as we're going to be bringing back the actual contract award question to you sometime in July, just direction to move forward with an informal RFQ, RFP process to bring back to the council, not more than five firms for selection sometime in July.
All right. Anyone excited to make that motion? All right, I'll make a motion to direct staff to work on an informal RFP, RFQ, to target five firms with a menu of services for council to consider at the earliest part of July as practical by either teleconference or council meeting in light of our targeted hire date. You have a second?
Second.
All right. Any comments? Anyone from the public on this item? Joan, I didn't think so. All right, good. And then also councils, staff reach out or, and council reach out to staff in the interim to give any additional input. And I'm sure Joan will just keep track of these other items that we might want to consider. And then also, I think it's okay, Joan, we give council a copy of Rick's memo. I think it was well-written and good for consideration. I read most of it already tonight, but.
Tuesday I'll distribute that.
Any other comments, input? Councilmember Hanson.
I just wanted to kind of just jump back because I do appreciate what Councilman Brown and Councilman Elke said about during this transition. I mean, there's a lot of times in the corporate world where once somebody renders a resignation, then, then they're done. Because you are in that tweener stage and while they might be providing some services, there might be some downsides to that as well. So, I, I do appreciate I'm bringing some of that out.
Okay, well, maybe what we could do is have council talk to Andrew and Andrew can talk to me and, and then we can see if there's anything further action that's really necessary related to this item because it's going to be over before we know it. So, I don't think it's really worth our considerations, frankly, from my perspective. But if you guys do, let's, you know, bring it up to Andrew perhaps. Councilmember Burge.
I'm not sure of our latitude of this discussion. As Councilwoman Dickie pointed out, I think Rick has added value since he's put his letter of resignation in. I think he's a professional. I think he'll carry himself with dignity. And I think he's earned, earned the right to, to, to finish out his, his work with us here. If you were to sit down and talk with him, he does have some thoughts and ideas to, to help put together some transitional documents such as what the mayor has. I can say in the past week, I've had inquiries from citizens on a number of items. And as is customary, I don't manage staff. I send an email to the town manager and say, follow up as you feel is appropriate. In each case, he's followed up with the citizens and in two cases, the issues, you know, were resolved. He's, he's, he's there, he's providing a service. I don't see that he's, he's, he's doing, doing, doing any damage. And just for me, it's just a matter of professional dignity and respect. And it's not initiative that I would support if it came to a vote. Thank you.
Thanks. I don't see much downsides. And it's very typical for a town manager to give 30 to 45 days notice for the town. So, it's not like a corporate setting where you're in a competitive situation largely. You might take, take secrets over to another competitor because you're going to a similar position. Town manager really isn't in that spot. I don't think it's worthy of consideration. He's done a fine job and he'll continue to add benefits as long as he's here and there's no cost savings. So, I'm, but, you know, if you guys have legitimate concerns, I would say talk to our town attorney. All right. So, we have a motion and a second? Anything further? All right. All in favor and capable, say an aye. Aye, opposed?
Seven to zero.
Thanks a bunch, Joan.
Mayor, I'd make a motion.
Yes, Councilmember Elke.
I'd like to make a motion that we terminate the town manager's position or terminate the contract effective July 1 and that we pay whatever monies that he is due under the contract.
Okay, we have a motion? We have a second? All right. Thanks. Councilmember Dickie.
Is there any negative ramifications to his reputation if he has to go forward saying that he was forced to leave before he was, before the contract was up?
Thanks. Andrew, do you suggest, or what are your advice related to this motion?
Mayor, I'd have to take a look at the contract and see what payout ramifications it has. Because he's still under contract for that last month, I don't know what that does with the severance provision. I want to make sure that we look at that before I give you any advice on it.
All right. Councilmember Dickie.
So, Mayor, what, our town attorney is saying we don't know the financial ramifications of taking this action right now?
Well, you know at least that you would owe the, the remaining salary for the month and the payout on vacation. But what I don't know is if the X, the 30 days triggers severance provision, which, you know, is considerably more than that. So, I want to make sure that we give that time to, to analyze it, to make sure that we're, we're not stepping on our landline.
So, there's no cost benefit to terminating early? There could be additional costs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think that's the best, Councilmember Burge hit the best term, that the unintended consequences aren't possible to be evaluated without looking at the contract.
Okay. Councilmember Elke.
If, if the town manager has given us notice of termination and he's given us the August 1 date, as far as if we were to sever the contract, I mean, would his notice have the effect of, I know it has the effect of severing it on August 1, but if we're severing it at this late stage in the contract, what would you contemplate? In the contract would be that we would owe him an additional, other than the salary and the vacation days.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Elke, like I said, I don't know that I want to render an opinion on the contract language without looking at it to get to make sure. But I don't know if that severance provision has the kind of clarity that you've read into it with respect to this motion. And I think that we don't know that. And that until we go back and evaluate it, we don't know that terminating earlier than his planned resignation date wouldn't get us there. I don't know that it would, I don't know it wouldn't, but I'm not willing to say without having looked at it whether or not that's the case.
Councilmember Burge.
You know, once, once again, Andrew, slow me down if this is outside the parameters of our agenda item and, or if there should be a discussion in each session. I would like to know the root cause. I have three, possibly four council members wanting to terminate our town manager, basically terminate our town manager early for some reason that I am not aware of. Is there some part of his contract that he has violated? The notion of a lame duck, duck syndrome, I'm not sure how it is in the military. I haven't been in the military. I know how it is in a corporate environment. As the mayor stated, you know, there's information and, and clients and so forth and so on. You don't want to share. As far as the town, town manager, you know, look at his contract. Come up with a reason in his contract for why he should be let go early. I have been with Rick this week in two meetings that the mayor was invited into. The mayor was unable to attend these meetings. They had to do with economic development. I know Councilman Elke may have been invited to one last week, was unavailable to go. I went with G-Pac. Rick's performance was admirable in that meeting. We just had someone visit us that's very interested in, in doing a project in town. The mayor asked me if I could go to that meeting. I went to that meeting. Rick did a very, very professional job in interacting with these clients. As a matter of fact, the clients have already given feedback that they were very impressed with the performance of the town and its team. So, maybe he's checked out a little. I mean, people when, they're not checking out sometimes, maybe check out a little. I, I'm just really astonished by this conversation and I, I need some root cause reasons other than the fact that maybe, you know, someone maybe cause reasons, other than the fact that maybe, you know, someone maybe doesn't like his management style. Um, so I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just astonished that we're having this discussion. I think we've created a tempest in a teacup by having this discussion. I think we've demonstrated disrespect for our town manager by having this conversation. And if someone up here has angst, and, and some folks at this dais have had angst over this town manager, and have treated him with, I believe, disrespect, then this is just adding insult to insult. And, um, I, it's, I'm just amazed.
Councilmember Elke.
I'll answer some of those questions. Nothing personal, and this has nothing to do with, um, Mr. Davis's past performances as a town manager. As I do believe he's lived up to his contract and what his obligations are under the contract. In the past number of months, or not weeks or months, uh, there's been numerous trips during this interview process, not only in Utah, but also in Oregon, where I think we've been very lenient as far as the amount of time that he's been able to take off and leave and go for these, for these different interviews. He's not here tonight. I think he's planning, and it, it stands to reason that you would be planning to leave and to move, move your family, move your job. You're making those contacts. So i- in this sense, we're not, we're not saying that he did not do a good job, and I'll very specifically say, I, I felt he did a good job as our town manager, and sad to see him go. But as Councilmember Brown pointed out, you know, whenever somebody gives notice in the corporate world, and, you know, they're all ready, ready to go, in the military, it's kind of similar, they're ready to go. And I think in this situation, we're not going to have any meetings in July. Slow month, nothing going on. We're not, we're not around. A lot of staff, you know, we've got a skeleton crew here. Not a lot of things going on. So I think it just helps facilitate this transition into a new era, a new town manager, and a new process. And again, it's not, it, it doesn't speak ill of Rick, and I would very plainly say that to Councilmember. It has nothing to do with Rick personally. I just think, you know, from the standpoint, from managerial standpoint, he, he, he's, he's planning his next step, you know, staff knows that too. And I, I think it would be helpful to start the transition sooner rather than later. And that, that's why, that's my motivation behind.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I might back up just a little bit. Councilmember Member Elke, I, I might have been just a little quick, because you know how I've, um, I've got some pretty tough feelings with the town manager, but when it comes to defamation and, and her, you know, he hasn't done anything to the town that, that would cause us to, uh, want to absolutely fire him, and that's, in essence, what I would be looking at doing. And after looking and listening to what Councilmember Eljay says, and putting myself in the same position that, um, the town manager would be in, I, I think I can, I can ride 28 days and, and, and live with it. I, I, I've been fired for a couple of pretty good jobs that had no basis to be fired, and, and the outcome was not pretty. So I can, I, I may just back up a little bit and say that I'll just, uh, continue on for 28 days and let it be.
And it is really about 16 business days.
All, all the more reason, 16 business days. You know, 16 business days for what? What are, I mean, really, I mean, 16 biz, town business days. I mean, it, I, I just don't see, you know, why not start taking the step and start moving in that, as far as that transition's concerned.
I'm all game for that. I just think he could be here and help us with the transition to really, because it's, it's coming. I, I think there's work that he could do, you know, as an example with this process he put together, working with, uh, um, our deputy town manager, and drafting reports, memos, whatever, getting, uh, her set up to succeed, and, um, and helping us to make sure we're prepared as best we can for this transition. Um, I, I don't, if there were cost savings, then perhaps, but I don't see any, any real benefit. He's a team player. He'll cooperate and continue to do whatever he needs to do, and whatever we might ask him to do as council members, I'm sure he'll, he'll do it for us. So we have a motion. We could also consider if you wanted to, to do more of a leave than terminate a contract, you know, you know, do, is that something you want to consider? Offer him some sort of leave, but, you know, I would rather keep him here. He's being paid. Let's have him do some good work as he goes out the door. And I, but I understand, you know, he's leaving us. I mean, nobody likes that. You're kind, there's, can be some angst when, you know, town manager's leaving us. Um, so I can understand some of this, but I see, you know, we're paying him. He's got some good work to do yet, like Councilmember Eljay shared, I shared. I'm sure there's a lot of other things that he will do for us as well. But there is a motion and a second. Is there still a second? Was that, Councilmember Vice Mayor, continue a second. So we still have a motion. Any further discussion on this item? And, uh, Andrew, oh, Councilmember Hanson.
I'm uncomfortable mainly because of what Andrew told us, that there could be those unintended consequences and additional costs.
That's what I wanted to go back to, just to make sure we understood that.
Mayor, I'll wait till I'm in motion.
Motion's been withdrawn. Thank you, Councilmember Elke. All right, anything, um, further before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn in a second?
Second. All right, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you, council. Thanks again, Joan.